Let us pray. Most gracious God, we are thankful for the many free gifts you give into our lives, the great blessings of another day, another opportunity to be in this world and to understand your greatness. We pray, Lord, that you be with this council today, be with the people that have gathered here as they go about the work of the city. We pray, Lord, that you would continue to lead this city, a city that is such a blessing to many, that depends upon your goodness. And gracious Father, all these things we pray and ask in your name. Amen.
May roll call, please.
Mayor West, Mayor Protim Neil, Councilmember Duriel, Councilmember Getz, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Felschah, and Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, today we have three presentations, and first, we're going to have a communications update. You got moved to the beginning.
Good afternoon. In your November nineteenth announcements, be sure to join us this Thursday for Beaumont's annual State of the City event. It's open to everyone, and you can just show up for lunch and an impressive showing from our city leaders as we take a look back at the past year and a look forward at what we have in store for the city. Plus, we'll have live entertainment from Lamar and our area high school bands and cheerleaders. It's going to be a lot of fun, but it's also filled with some important city information. So mark your calendars. Be sure to join us Thursday, November twenty first, from eleven a.m. to one p.m. at the Beaumont Civic Center, or if you're not able to make it, you can watch it live. We will be streaming it on the City of Beaumont's Facebook page. We want to remind you, city offices will be closed November twenty eighth and twenty ninth for Thanksgiving holiday. Also be advised, there will be no garbage, heavy trash, or yard waste collection at the city's landfill on Thanksgiving Day, so our employees can enjoy the holiday with their families. But the collection schedule will resume on Friday, November twenty ninth. And with Thanksgiving next week, that means Christmas is just around the corner, and the Seventh Annual City of Beaumont Christmas Tree Lighting is back, featuring us stuning drone light show and snow sledding. Take a look.
Kick off the holidays with the Seventh Annual City of Beaumont Christmas Tree Lighting at the Downtown Event Center Lake on Wednesday, December fourth, at five p.m. Enjoy festive music, colorful drone show, food trucks, and holiday family fun at the free City of Beaumont Christmas Tree Lighting at the Downtown Event Center Lake on Wednesday, December fourth, at five p.m. Sponsored by ExxonMobil. Learn more at beaumonteventxt.com.
It's one of the only times you'll see snow in southeast Texas. So that's December fourth, from five to seven thirty at the Downtown Event Center Lake.
It's really good, though, Tina.
So good. We want to watch it over and over. Okay, and finally, this is the most important announcement today. It's time for us to say, wait for it, a fond farewell and best wishes to an officer of the city. She served our community for the past thirty-two years. Officer Carol Riley began her career with the Beaumont Police Department on August twelfth of nineteen ninety-two. She started in our patrol division as a beat officer protecting the streets of Beaumont. Seven years later, she transferred to our narcotics vice unit and worked undercover locally and with the FBI task force on many narcotics and sex crimes cases. These are some of the most dangerous areas of the city. She then transferred to a field training officer, teaching our newest officers the ins and outs of being an effective professional police officer. In two thousand ten, Officer Riley moved into her final position as our public information officer in the Public Relations Department. Officer Riley also served as the PIO for the Emergency Operations Center, playing a crucial role in media relations and sharing information during some of the worst natural disasters this area has ever seen. She spent numerous hours in the community, meeting people in their neighborhoods with outreach programs like Cops and Kids, Dare, BISD's RURE program, and Back to School Supply Drives for Kids in Need. She organized events for kids in housing complexes when she was housing officer, and she was a founding member of the Santa in Blue program. Officer Riley has held the position of public information officer for the Beaumont Police Department for the last fourteen years, leading up to her retirement, which sadly will be this coming Friday. She says she's looking forward to spending more time with her sweet children and family, and we wish her the very best of luck in her retirement. Thank you, Officer Carol Riley, for your service to our community.
You know, what we do, some things just give us more pleasure than others, and this is one that gives me tremendous pleasure and honoring Carol for what she's done. You heard her resume, you heard her bio, and it's fantastic what she's done with the city. I think she's worked in almost every department here or building here, and we appreciate it. This is Carol's last city council meeting in her career, so we definitely want to honor her today and do that. So we're going to honor her, and Mayor, you want to say something before or after?
I'll say something after.
Okay. Okay. This is appreciation of service, Officer Carol Riley, Police Community Relations, September tenth through November twenty twenty-four, and appreciation of your fourteen years of dedicated service to the city council, not just the city, and citizens of the city of Beaumont. So congratulations, Carol. Thank you.
Well, if you guys got out of control today, I was going to fill out a green syllable, so I guess I'm gonna let you make it. It's, um, it's not very often anybody surprises me, so good job. Just thank you. Thank you to the citizens of Beaumont. I truly love what I do, and I will miss a lot of different things about the job that I've been blessed to serve doing for many, many years. Again, I'm at a loss for words. I'm looking forward to spending time with my beautiful grandkids and children, and I feel sorry for the person that's going to get my city cellphone. Whoever gets it next is going to definitely have a lot of phone calls. But again, thank you so much. I've had a blessed career, and I look forward to what God has in store for me next. I've made no big plans. I'm waiting to see what doors open. But again, thank you very, very much.
Carol, here's the lid, too. But I, I just want to say, I've known Officer Riley for decades now, and she is, she has the character and integrity that you see here for the last fourteen years, but she's been demonstrating it as a police officer for this city for decades, but not just as an officer, but throughout the community. And she has been an incredible asset, and I know I'm grateful to God for her service and her friendship and for her to be a part of our city. I'm going to miss her, but I also wish her well, because she deserves this as well. So, and Chief, do you have something you want to? Okay.
Again. One, two, three, and one, two, three. Okay, thank you. And that's all for the city announcements.
Now we have a presentation from Angela Wright, City of Beaumont Chief Technology Officer on the City of Beaumont's AI Policy Guidelines.
So let's get started. The city manager has asked me to give just a brief description of our new AI policy in the realm of AI that we're venturing into. Obviously, policies have to be in place so that we can protect information, make sure that it's ethical, the use is all ethical, that we're not sharing information that shouldn't be shared, and that it's being used in an effective way. So first thing we did was he tasked us to create an AI committee, and we were tasked with creating and managing the AI policy and guidelines. We will also, after this first phase, be tasked with reviewing new requests for software to be added to the approved list and to grow anything else with the AI that we're going to provide our employee community. Our AI committee is myself, Beau Hanson, Chris Boone, Christina Lowkey, Demi Ingman, Miles Haynes, and Tracy Kinnick. So just a little introduction of what we're going to discuss today. We're going to give a slight overview of AI and city operations, and we're going to discuss AI tools like ChatGPT, Google Gemini, and Microsoft Copilot, and how they enhance productivity, but also carry risks, for example misinformation and bias. So tips for effective prompts. One is to use clear and specific prompts. Actually, I feel like I missed a slide. Okay, maybe? Sorry. To use clear and specific prompts, an example would be, tell me about dogs. Try to describe the physical characteristics and temperament of a golden retriever. Use grounding techniques, so you're going to attribute output to a source by specifying according to recent studies. You're going to set constraints and rules. You're going to use clear rules to guide output. For example, you would write a, ask it to write a fourteen-line sonnet on love with ten syllables per line. You can use multi-step prompts. So for example, rather than asking, what is the best diabetes treatment, you would break it down and list common diabetes treatments, followed by which treatments are most effective according to recent studies. You also want to assign, ooh, that is not what I wanted it to do. Going to want to also assign a role to AI. For example, you're going to want it to, instead of saying, tell me about quantum mechanics, you're going to specify, as a researcher, how would I, how would I explain quantum mechanics?
You got to give us any of these answers?
Some examples for practical use. You would use it for training outlines for AI ethics. You can use it for onboarding packets for city employees. You could use it to create a project plan or creation of grant presentations. You can draft RFPs. You can draft press releases. You can draft board meeting agendas. I used ChatGPT to help me with this presentation. So for example, you could use a prompt that says, create an outline for a one-hour training session on AI risks and ethics for city staff tailored to a diverse audience. And then you could follow it up with additional context about the audience to refine the generated outline that you've received. Or if you're wanting to create an onboarding packet, you would ask it, develop an onboarding packet for new planning board members, introducing them to the city organization and functions. If you wanted to create a project plan for a grant, the prompt you would, you could enter would be, create a project plan for an environmental grant focused on reducing plastic waste in coastal communities. If you wanted to do a request for proposal, you could ask it to draft an RFP for a water treatment facility in Colorado Springs, Colorado. And if you wanted it to write a press release, you would ask it, write a press release announcing a local permit for childcare funding for low-income families. One example for practical use, using the information for our next presentation, I asked ChatGPT. Guess it doesn't like my Wi-Fi. I had asked it to provide me information on the city parks and what cameras we have currently in the city parks, and it detailed out information from a previous council memo. So a responsible use checklist. You're going to verify accuracy and check for bias. You're going to ensure privacy labeled AI, that you've going to ensure privacy. You're going to make sure you label AI-generated content, and you're going to follow city policies. So for example, if you look back at the, at the beginning of the slide, which is on the front page of all of your packets, it states at the bottom, this presentation was partially created using Chat Copilot and ChatGPT. So that tells you that some of this information was garnered that way. So for verifying accuracy, you're going to ensure content accuracy before using AI-generated material for official city documents. To verify sources and provide attribution as necessary, you want to check for bias and inclusivity. Carefully review AI outputs for unintended bias or content that may be exclusionary, using fair and inclusive language. You want to ensure privacy and security. You're not going to want to put input confidential or personally identifiable information into any AI tools, or specifically any city, any city data that is not publicly allowed. So you're going to follow city data security protocols. And as we discussed previously, label AI-generated content and follow city policies. All employees are going to receive annual training, just like we do for cybersecurity. All employees that use any kind of computer, because AI is actively growing, it's being included in a lot of software so that we can't control, we can't block it, it's just there. And so they're going to have access to it, no matter what we do. So every employee is going to be required to take annual AI training. And again, we're going to want to protect sensitive data, avoid sharing any personally identified information, and use, and use only approved cloud platforms with vendor audits, because any platforms that are not approved could be storing our information incorrectly or insecurely. And we are going to, the AI committee is tasked with vetting each of these programs to make sure that they are storing them securely. So what is PII? PII is Personally Identifiable Information. So common examples would be your full name, your social security number, your date of birth, your address, email address, phone number, driver's license, financial accounts, medical records, your IP address, and your login credentials. Bias and ethical standards. You're going to want to regularly review for bias. You're going to want to promote transparency and accountability. And verify, you're going to want to check any AI-generated content for accuracy. Any, I'm sure everybody has seen the AI-generated pictures on Facebook or any kind of social media where someone has four fingers instead of five, or you just want to make sure that any text, any information that is provided is accurate, because just because you've input information in doesn't mean that it's going to provide you what you're wanting back out. So you can't just tell it to write you this email and send it, because you may not have the correct tone, you may not have the correct information. Going back, you're going to want to respect copyright. That is one big concern right now with AI, is copyright infringement. I have, in my previous position at St. Houston, we did, we received a lot of copyright infringement notices from students in the dorms. We don't receive as many here. Shray would probably get those before I do, but we do want to make sure that we aren't getting those nasty letters from other companies. And you're going to want to, again, label clearly that this was AI-generated content. So our currently approved list of tools is Adobe Firefly, Canva, ChatGPT, Copilot, Gemini, HootSuite, Loom, MailChimp, Otter, and Zoom AI. As I specified earlier, the AI committee is in, is going to meet quarterly to review and approve any guidelines that need to be adopted or changed, and for departments to request exceptions for a business case that's not currently in the current guidelines. Any questions?
Thanks. Mayor, this is a part of business, what we're doing now. We deal with it every day. We have employees that already use it. We have a book that's using it. We have vendors that submit us proposals created by AI, et cetera. So we were just being proactive and creating a policy and how we deal with that, to make sure vendors disclose that they put their proposals together with AI, et cetera, and, and make sure we don't corrupt our systems with people using it internally. So we're, we're, we're working with now, but we're, we're planning for the future, and well into the future, and we think this will serve us well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then we're going to move on. You get to do the next presentation as well, so on Parks Camera. So as people can see.
All right. So we have our council presentation for Parks Camera Installations. Again, as you will see at the bottom, this presentation was partially created using Copilot and ChatGPT. All right. So today, in this presentation, we're going to discuss, we're going to introduce the committee. We're going to talk about logistics and planning. We're going to talk about our current camera footprint that we have in the parks right now. We're going to discuss what we currently have in the FY twenty-five budget request and what it's going to take for us to get the remaining parks. And then we'll have questions. So our Parks Camera Committee is myself, Bart Bart Koviac, Chris Boone, Cody Porz, Cody Hensley, Jimmy Neal, Justin Hargraves, Kenneth Riggett, Kenny Smith, and Michael Gears. Okay, so a little bit of logistics. So for camera installations in the parks, it's most cost efficient and beneficial to install the cameras at the ingress and egress of the parking lots and facilities, such as pavilions, bathrooms, and community centers. Our installation process takes the initial planning, takes about a week. That's mostly IT. The site assessment takes approximately about a week to get everybody scheduled and to walk the site, and that's going to include IT, building services, traffic management, and our vendor. That one didn't get made, put on there. Our equipment procurement, that's going to take about one to two weeks, and that's going to be vendors on the IT side and the building services side, as well as the traffic management side. Power setup takes one to two weeks, depending on weather, and that's going to be from building services, and then whether and whether or not they need to purchase anything for the setup. Pole installation is from traffic management. Again, one to two weeks, depending on weather and depending on whether or not they have the equipment in stock. The camera installation is going to be our vendor, and that's one to two weeks, depending on what our vendor has available for scheduling. Testing and integration is approximately one week, and that's in conjunction with IT and our vendor. And then that does include IT creating all of the layouts for all the different departments who view these cameras on a daily basis. And then the final review is done by the departments that have access to it, police, parks, recreation, and then the final handover, essentially the go-live for them to be used for police and the departments. So how are our parks determined for installation? So Phase One was in two thousand twenty-two. We focused on parks with the top ten property and violent crime rates. We determined that the majority of those, if not all of them, included community centers. So given the amount of money that we had to spend, we focused on our parks with community centers at that time. So Phase Two, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, we compared current call statistics with our two thousand twenty-two call statistics. We also addressed known issues identified by staff and police, because we do realize that there are, there is information that staff and police know that doesn't necessarily show up in our call statistics. Our current camera footprint, the total initial cost was ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Our recurring cost annually for that setup is nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Our overall cost for initial and yearly for our first year was one hundred and six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Currently, we have cameras at Folsom Hike and Bike Trail. We have two cameras. That cost six thousand forty-five dollars for install, and it has a recurring cost of nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Gulf Terrace Hike and Bike has two cameras with a cost, installation cost and recurring cost matching the Folsom Hike and Bike. Klein Park, we have cameras, two cameras in the north parking lot, two cameras in the south parking lot, with costs of fourteen thousand six hundred and forty, with a recurring cost of one thousand nine hundred and ninety. At Alice Keith, Alice Keith Park Community Center, we have five cameras with a total cost of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five and a recurring annual cost of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five. Central Park Imagination Station has three cameras with a cost of thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five and a recurring yearly cost of one thousand one hundred and forty-five. John Paul Davis Center has five cameras with a cost of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty and a recurring yearly cost of seven hundred and fifty. And Rogers Park, we have cameras located at Miller Library, two of those, for five thousand seven hundred and fifty with a recurring cost of three hundred dollars. At the community center, there are two cameras. At the Dallin Park, Dallin Parking Lot, there are three cameras. At the Gladys Parking Lot, there are three cameras with a total cost of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with a recurring yearly cost of one thousand and fifty dollars. So for FY twenty-five Parks Budget Request, we have a total initial cost of eighty thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-six cents with a recurring yearly cost of fourteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Our budgeted amount is ninety thousand, which we will be able to, I know if you add the yearly cost to the total initial cost, it is more than ninety thousand. However, because they will be spaced out, the annual costs are, the init- initial cost will cover the annual cost upfront. Um, and we'll be able to cover that gap. Uh, there isn't, I did wanna make note that staff installation cost, any staff time is not included in any of these numbers because it's staff salary. Um, so those, those numbers are not captured. So for FY twenty-five, we are budgeted to put four cameras at Babe Zaharias Park for a total of eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents with a recure- recurring yearly cost of six hundred dollars. At Charlton Pollard, we will have two cameras uh, the cost of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents with a recurring yearly cost of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Uh, Gulf Terrace Hike and Bike, the Dishman Entrance will be two cameras for eight thousand one hundred and forty-one oh one with a recurring cost of one thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Luffler Park will have one camera, and when we say one camera, the, this is a relatively large camera and it has four lenses that gives you a three sixty-degree view. Um, the, with a cost of six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-five cents uh with a recurring cost of one thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. Liberia, you're having one of those same three hundred and sixty-degree cameras for six thousand nine hundred and seventy-one sixty-five cents with the same recurring cost as Luffler. Magnolia is um one camera um with a total of eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-two cents and a recurring cost of six hundred dollars. Pearlstein has one camera with a total of six thousand nine seventy-one sixty-five and a recurring cost of one thousand two hundred and ninety-five. Roberts Park is gonna have one of those um large cameras as well um with the same total and the same annual cost as well as Sprout Park, which will have a total cost of seven thousand four seventy-one sixty-five and a recurring cost of twelve ninety-five. And then at the Terrell Park Entrance, we are putting a license plate reading camera. And um after talking to police, they felt that that was sufficient for now. Um, the total cost for that is three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars with a recurring cost of three thousand dollars. And all of these will be included into our FUSIS system. So the remaining parks. Um, the total one-time cost for all remaining parks is gonna be two hundred and ten thousand dollars with a recurring annual cost of forty-two thousand dollars. So we have Beaumont Athletic Complex. Um, we project to cost, these costs are all estimated based on our current um costs. No, these parks have not been walked. Um, they have been viewed on Google Earth and they have been estimated based on our knowledge of these parks. Uh, but they have not been adequate, uh, they have not been completely walked to make sure that these are the exact numbers that would, they would be. They're just um estimates, budgetary estimates. Um, Beaumont Athletic Complex uh would be a total of ten thousand dollars. Caldwell, um, well, I guess all of these on this list are looking at ten thousand dollars with a recurring annual cost of two thousand dollars. So Beaumont Athletic Complex, Caldwell, I don't know how to say that word. Should I say it wrong? Uh, Colliers Ferry and Combest Park. Uh, ten, ten. Looks like we've got ten thousand dollars on all these parks as well. So Cottonwood Park, Fletcher Mini Park, Forest Park, Gilbert Park and Guzman Park. And ten, ten. Looks like we've got the same on all of these, so how, how booty? Alright. Ida Reed, uh, Jacob Street Park, Martin Luther King Junior Park and McLean Park. And then we have the same approximate ten thousand dollars for Pine Street Park, Pipkin Park and Rotary Centennial Playground. And same on Walden Park, uh Lamar Pavilion, Wise Park and Wuthering Heights Park. Any questions?
Councilman Turner.
Uh, first of all, the staff, thank you for addressing uh the council and the community's concerns about protecting our parks, including some of the major projects that's been done at the parks and destroyed. Uh, one of my questions about Sprout Park. I noticed we had one camera scheduled for Sprout Park. Would that one camera be facing towards the football field where we recently had some of the turf destroyed?
That camera is gonna be a three sixty-degree camera, so it would be four different cameras that um go all the way around. It's gonna be on a pole, I believe at the bathroom facility, and it, so it's going to be able to see three hundred and sixty degrees along that park.
So we'll cover the football field. Alright, yes, I know that was a big topic for, you know, a lot of our uh youth coaches and some of those kids. And unfortunately, what happened, but now we have a system in place where we can actually see who is doing damage at our park. Another one was the Charlton Pollard Park. I'm talking about parks that've kinda made the news with some of the vandalism. Can you kinda speak to the angles and what all that will cover at Charlton Pollard Park? Would it be three sixty as well? Would it be able to cover the entire park?
Three sixty as well. I'll let somebody that's actually walked the parks.
Thank you.
Are you in, Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so for, over there at CP, over there, it'll be um over the restroom pavilion, and we'll actually have two four-lens cameras stacked on top of each other, separated. And so from there, we'll have a true three sixty as well.
Okay.
Um, they'll be covering the, from the whole uh tennis courts over there off to the side to the pavilion, to the splash pad, to the actual new playground. They got a little bit of damage over there as well. And then it'll cover the actual backside of the uh restroom facility as well, where they have the sinks ripped off the side.
Okay.
As well as the parking lot and everything else. So I mean, we'll have complete coverage over there as well as the actual um walking uh route all the way around the actual park as well.
Okay, and my last question with the license plate readers with Terrell Park, would it be able to catch people who are going in there with maybe a side-by-side or maybe a, uh, what is it? The four-wheelers, would it be able to catch those little plates?
I think it's just uh, and and maybe Gears can speak to this. It's just looking for an actual license plate because it's not like an actual live stream. It's just taking snapshots.
Mm-hmm.
So uh, I believe it'll just capture any moving vehicle that's kinda going through there.
Yeah, just one of my concerns is, you know, you see, we don't supposed to have them. You see people go back there and just be able to identify who it is so we can actually do something about it.
I can speak on that.
Yes, sir.
The license plate reader that's gonna be installed there is a flood license plate reader. It's motion-activated. So if it's a pedestrian, personal and bike, four-wheeler, side-by-side, whatever it may be, it's gonna be captured. So it's not gonna give any identifying information, but their image will be there. And most of the time when someone's riding one of those by there, you can actually see their face what they're wearing, so it gives an idea of who they are and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, well, well, I just wanna compliment you guys because this was a priority for the council and you guys have actually went and put a committee together and identified some high crime areas. So thank you guys, alright?
Councilman Durio.
Yeah, I just have one question. What are the uh, what does the recurring yearly costs cover? What is, what is that?
Uh, so there's actually multiple parts of it. So for some of these locations where we don't have any internet access out there, we have like a Verizon Credible Point, so it's covering the cellular for that as well as the management software for the Credible Point. And then for, depending on the number of lenses for the camera, there's a cost per lens for each of the cameras. Uh, and then also the yearly cost for maintenance on that camera as well. So, does that answer that for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Phil Shaw.
Quick question. I just wanted to know, uh, the images captured by the cameras goes to a cloud?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, they can?
So if it gets vandalized, like you, the hike and bikes, you know, that's what can we factor into that? If someone was to vandalize that camera, at least it's going directly up to the clouds so we kinda have the last minutes of what happened there before that happens.
Right. Councilman Phil Shaw.
First of all, you have my full support on this program. I think this is great. I'm just curious, on a park like Wise Park, where there's nothing there, there's nothing there but a few oak trees. There's not even a bench there. Is that a good allocation of our monies to cover a park like that where you're, there's nothing there but grass?
Um, for phase three, um, our plan is to continue with um prioritizing based on calls for service. Um, it has been my understanding from staff and police that just because there's nothing there doesn't mean that people don't congregate there and that it wouldn't be a reas- that there would still be reason for calls for service. Um, would, depending on the number of calls for service, would it be in phase three, phase four? Um, at, at that point, I mean, we wouldn't know until we got into the, to the next phase of cameras.
Well, there you go. Thank you for your answer.
Yes, Councilman Neil.
Um, Mr. Manager, what's the reason for, for putting this in so many phases? Is it staffing? Is it?
Yeah, and I can explain that uh better than I can, Councilmember Neil. But yeah, some of it's staffing and timing. Uh, they can only get so much work done in a year. And at first phase, we were able to get some things. What we put in the budget for this year, the eighty thousand, ninety thousand, staff said, this is what we can do in a year. We can do this many, you know. To do it quicker than that, we'd have to go out and get other outside resources. So, yeah, that's why it's in phases, to time it out what, according to what staff can get done.
Is there anything we can do to expedite it?
I wanna answer that one.
Yes, but then nothing else for the city gets done either. So we're, we're using?
Is it a budget issue?
It's a staffing issue. So, um, for example, uh, Justin is our camera person, but he also handles Itron, so the water meter software. He also, which is a large project going on right now, he also handles um
OpenGov.
The OpenGov software, your open record software. He handles the cybersecurity si- uh, training side. Um, so i- if he is tied up with the um parks cameras, then he's going to not be able to handle support for the other tasks that he has and the other projects he has on his plate. And it's not just IT. Um, we're talking uh Randall with Building Services. Um, that would prevent him from, I mean, he, he's the one that works with us on uh the installations at the parks. Um, he would also be tied up. You're taking away traffic management, people that are usually working on traffic. They have to take the time to set the poll as well as our vendor of record who also has a relatively large business that doesn't include just the city of Beaumont Parks cameras.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager. Did you have something else?
I, I, I didn't, but I, I will add that they, they got the estimate on all the parks. I talked with Councilmember Neil and we talked a bit and he wanted to have information on all of them. So that's why some of the parks that maybe are not as uh are visible or have as many resources are included. We just wanted to get a, an estimate on all the parks.
And one more comment, ma'am. And kinda what brought up the comment was going back to what happened at Sprout Park here a couple of weeks ago, which was, I mean, right behind what happened at Charlton Pollard. I mean, it's getting ridiculous spending the amount of money we are on the parks when they're getting damaged quicker than we even finish.
Alright, thank you. Thank y'all. And for those that are here for proclamations and presentations and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so and we thank you for coming. At the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluations duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven four of the government code, to wit specifically Craig Lively, uh Chief Magistrate, Tina Broussard, City Clerk, Shray Reed, City Attorney, and Kenneth R. Williams, City Manager. And now we're gonna move into the public comments times for those citizens who wish to speak. You may speak and you may make public comments on the consent agenda and regular agenda items one through thirteen or any other topic. Uh, the City Clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please be reminded that myself nor council can respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from our office will contact you.
Dora Nisby.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Dora Nisby. I reside at forty-five twenty Carley Street here in Beaumont, Texas. I'm here today um because you have appointed me as Chairman of the Library Commission. So I'm speaking to you on that, on behalf of the Library Commission. First, I wanna thank you for providing for the citizens of Beaumont a first-class library system. We have first-class resources. We have certified staff persons. The library system is approved and accredited by the American Library Association. Not all cities and all library staffs can say that, but because of your support and your provisions, we can say that. There are many cities in Texas and throughout the country would love to have the excellent library system that Beaumont provides for all of its citizens. I'm here to ask you if you would please consider maintaining the status of the library system that we have now. I know that there are many other ways that this building, these buildings can be used, but they have been designed for the use of a library. The, these, the library staff has been up-to-date, keeps up-to-date with all the resources. It's not just certified or evaluated by the number of books that are circulated. Books come in all different forms and all of them are not circulated. Some are online, some are used in the library. And I would just tell you, um, some of the things that libraries do that are just not books. Today, I went to the library and I couldn't find a parking place over there at the downtown library. The parking lot was full. Why? Because the citizenship class was in progress. We teach the citizens that come to this country and they have to be, learn the rules and all. This, this is done through the library. I went to the library one day and I, on the inside, there were people standing in line. I said, why don't you sit down? They said, well, I'm waiting to use the computer. We didn't have enough computers. But the library is just not books. And we serve all of the people, children to senior citizens and all those in between. So as you make your considerations about changing the status of the downtown library, please consider all of the citizens.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sheridan Jefferson.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheridan Jefferson. I live at forty-seven eighty-five Lufkin Street in the north end of town. My husband, Isaac, and I live there. We have had constantly problems with that sewage. We've been, we've been fighting with a sewage problem for over twenty years. But the last four years, we got some immediate help from Mr. Guess. My husband called him and he started the ball rolling for us. But since that time, we have not had a complete, because the water backs up. When that rain comes, that water backs up in my house. And I, and I, I'm, I'm, we really, we tired. We are senior citizens. I cannot come to this meeting every Tuesday. I am a grandmother. I keep my grandchildren. So I can't come in here harassing you every, every Tuesday about, what's the problem? Councilman Samuel, you are our councilman out there. I talked, I talked to you once about that problem. You stood in a neighborhood.
That's, that's, we don't need to address specific council people. We can talk about the?
Okay, well then, hey, we, we got a problem. And hey, what's the budget? Are you gonna do something about this, about that sewer line? Cause hey, instead of, I, we feel, instead of working on other things, take care of the people, the citizens. We pay our taxes and we would like to see, we, we tired. I can't, I can't afford to keep uh wondering, scared when I have company. Hey, is the toilet finna back up on me again? So that's my problem.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charlie Crapp.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager and staff. It's good to be down here to the council again. My name is Charlie Crabbe, and I live at nine twenty-eight East Stride, seven 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 zero six. It is another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Summer temperatures are having a hard time leaving town. And high school football is in playoff mode. And I hate to see, hear about our councilman having a confrontation in a parking lot at the local restaurant. I like the presentation of the cameras. I just wonder if it's a little overkill to start with. But the lady with the library, she has a good point. And surely, the sewer system really needs a immediate and strong effort to get that squared away. The new police, citywide camera system is paying off with several quick arrests after crimes are committed. I would like to ask the firefighters' union to not dictate to the city on administration of the EMS system. Also, to deal realistic on wages and benefits. The city of Beaumont does not have unlimited funds to pay enormous wages. The city tax base is limited. The tax base has only grown by the Texas, Jefferson County Tax Appreval District, increasing the taxable value on the property. If owners sell for the new appraised value, they would be more than pleased. I have noticed that the majority of our firefighters live outside the city and do not contribute to our city support. We love our firefighters, there's no doubt. The citizens of Beaumont do appreciate the service of all firefighters, but the city cannot support the large pay and benefits request. This is due to aging facility tax role. Firefighters, be reasonable on your wage and benefits respect. Our Israeli friends are still dealing with the terrorists. And thank you very much, everybody, for listening.
You, sir.
Amanda Yarborough.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you all so much for your time. Amanda Yarborough, Beaumont Children's Museum, seven oh one Main Street, Beaumont. I'd like to first say thank you so much for allowing time to be able to come talk. I'd also like to say, yes, Ms. Nora Nisby does have a definite point. The library system does do great things. Along with, I'd also like to say a gracious thank you to the administration for time and Mr. Paul Eady for sitting down and having an open conversation with me. The idea of bringing together the library and the Beaumont Children's Museum is just in the conversation stage. And the idea is that I am very thankful to be able to have this as an opportunity to talk more about this possibility. We hope that only, that this will be an opportunity to have a gracious roundtable conversation, do more research, find a way to make sure this is a possible and successful idea, and to move forward only when we have that. I thank you all very much for being open and listening, and also taking time to look into what all people might think. I also would like to give a great thank you to the downtown business owners who have already called to give their support on this idea, along with the many museum supporters who have actually called about the article that was written. Thank you all so much for being open and having the time to talk more about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Desatell.
Robin Desatell, forty-three thirty-one, Captain Kidway, Beaumont, Texas. I first want to give an honor to God and to Councilman Phil Shaw and Councilman Getz and all the councilmen here, and everyone who serves our city. Thank you for your services. As our world and our nation is coming to revival, I'd like to proclaim that our city will have new beginnings, godly transformation, and reformation with unity. So, I say today, lift up your heads, O ye gates, open up ye ancient doors, so that the King of Glory may come in. The Lord God Almighty, I yield back my time. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you for all those that made public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda, and item F, yes?
We'll call him during, he wants to speak during the public hearing on one of the properties. So, we'll wait for public hearing for you.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Pryor. It's okay.
Yes. So, we're moving to the consent agenda, and item F has been pulled from the consent agenda. So, is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda without item F being pulled?
Move to approve.
There's a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda without item F. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider amending the Water Utility Service Line Inspection Agreement with Republic Meter, Inc. of Dallas, Texas, that comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance, and authorize final payment to Gulf Coast Electric Company of Beaumont, Texas for the Rue Street Lift Station Electrical and Controls Improvements Project, and comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
I saw a move for approval. Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'll need to recuse myself.
Okay. Councilman Phil Shaw has recused himself. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three to the contract with Two-Max Construction LLC of Houston for the Florida Avenue Emergency Sewer Repair, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with CDM Smith Incorporated to continue management of the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is an MS four permit for the city of Beaumont for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Norman Highway Constructors, Inc. of Orange for the bridge repair project for various locations citywide rebid, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five? Is there a second for approval?
Second.
It'd be Councilman Phil Shaw. There is a motion in a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Can you identify which bridges these repairs are going to apply to?
Councilman, I can get that to you, but I did not actually bring the bridges themselves there. Tech dot inspects our bridges every few years, and they give us repairs that need to be done on those bridges. So, this is a collection of bridges across the city. I know the one on Phelan's one of them. But there's probably eight to eleven different locations citywide where they've noted that repairs are necessary.
Are these repairs one consistent type of repair that they are identifying? Is it a variety of things? You're talking about retrofitting something? What are we talking about in most cases?
They're deficiencies. So, in some cases, it might be the safety structure, the railing alongside the bridge. In other cases, we've had spalling of the concrete that exposes the metal rebar within the bridge support that needs to be fixed. In the case of Phelan, some of the structure is twisting a little bit on there. You can see when you drive across it that those concrete rails along the side don't meet exactly. So, we need to prevent that from twisting any further. None of them is catastrophic, meaning that the bridge would need to be shut down, but they're all preventative in nature to preserve the ability to use that bridge safely years in the future.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Texas Materials Group, doing business as Gulf Coast of Beaumont for the street pavement preservation citywide Phase Two project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
In the past, I've seen a few more contractors bid on a project to this magnitude. Do you think it's a specific reason we only came out with two in comparison to what we've normally got in the past?
We're not getting a lot on asphalt projects because there's only one provider of asphalt in the area. So, that would be your low bid, apparent low bid in this case, Texas Materials Group. So, they run the actual only asphalt plant available in the area. Alco's the only other vendor that has recently attacked or bid on these projects. And no one else is really doing that work. They feel they can't undercut the owner of the asphalt plant, I think.
I understand that, but even on other bids, we have companies from other places. It's just kind of strange, don't we see?
Not big enough to pull somebody out of Houston. You'd have to have something the size of, say, the I-ten project, where you've got Williams Brothers coming in from outside the area. But those are gigantic, multi-hundreds-of-million-dollar bids.
I understand. I've just kind of seen this company pretty consistent with this particular project, but I understand why.
If we ever get a second asphalt plant, back when we had two, we used to have a second vendor that would consistently bid on asphalt projects. If we get some additional asphalt plants in the area, you'll start to see additional bids.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. So, now, Mr. City Manager, may we go to item number seven and have the reading?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to King Solution Services, LLC of Houston, Texas, for the Grant Avenue and Magnolia Avenue pipe bursting contract, Phase One, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
So, move.
Excuse me, that's seven. I was checking on Tina over there, and she did good. So, there's a second for approval on item number seven. There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on item number seven? Yes, Councilman Turner?
I noticed this is in Ward Three to Magnolia area, and we had a citizen came up here and spoken, referenced some sewer baggage in Ward Three, the north end area. If by any chance, this area in the same facility as the complaint made earlier? Because I know, you know, she's been at it for quite some time.
There is a sewer eval contract that the contractor's on the ground that covers that area, including Lufkin Street. That's the immediate work. I don't believe this pipe bursting is addressing anything right by Lufkin. But there is a sewer eval contract with testing and sewer evaluation that's supposed to pin down issues in that area.
Okay, but the eval is only going to kind of identify what we have going on in the area, where we can make a decision on how we'll go about.
But if there's an immediate problem, it'll also address it once it's discovered.
Thank you.
Question. Now, that system, where does that, all of the, that coming from that area, where does it go? What direction?
It goes down Lucas.
Straight down Lucas, too, and goes to the north?
Yeah, the primer lift station is the one that's most tied to that area.
Right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Council consider a resolution confirming the city manager has to authorize representative and to apply for funding assistance with the Texas Water Development Board. Comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
So, move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval on item number eight. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
Mark, can you talk a little bit further about what this is really all about? I know that the EPA has asked us and tasked us with determining service lines that have lead content. A letter went out from the city, from your department, I think, or the Water Department, maybe, saying that there were a lot of service lines within the city where the city could not identify what the line was made of, but it might be made out of lead. That led to a, led to a different type of, using the word, to a lot of citizens being concerned that they might possibly have lead in their service line. Would you address all this for a little bit?
So, we were required by the EPA to do an inventory of all service lines within the city, both our service line that goes from the main to the meter, as well as the customer service line that goes from the meter to their house. And that's a requirement the EPA's put on every water system within the United States. The deadline for us to submit our initial inventory to TCQ was October sixteenth, which we did so. However, when we submitted that inventory, we also had thirty days to send out a required- However, when we submitted that inventory, we also had thirty days to send out a required letter. And the EPA gave us required language for that. It was about a three-page letter from the EPA. We were able to modify that somewhat, but we had to get approval by TCQ. However, there were items within the letter, language within the letter, including what you referred to, that your line may be lead that was required to be put in that letter. So the requirement for the letters after we put the inventory in was any address that had a lead line that we had identified or a galvanized line that we had identified, or if we had not done inventory at that address yet and it was unknown, we were required to send a letter out. So we had identified the material, uh, at approximately seventy-two hundred addresses within the city. But then we had forty-three thousand that fit in the other categories. So we had one lead line. There was, I don't know, maybe a hundred or so galvanized lines. I've got it somewhere here. But most of them were just unknown on there. But unfortunately with that language that said, as part of the unknown, it could be lead, that did lead to some concerns. We've taken about a hundred phone calls at Water Utilities. We did give them our number in the letter to call, uh, and we've talked to them. We've assured them that it does not mean that their water's unsafe, that there's lead in the water. It just means that we haven't identified the line as of yet. Now, citizens, if they want to help us out and identify that, they can do so. There's a self-identification survey if they've done plumbing work recently or if they want to, um, expose the line and check. And there's some guidelines on that as to whether a magnet adheres to it or not, or et cetera. And they can report, port that line. Otherwise, the city will be working through that process in the coming years to inventory all of the lines throughout the city of Beaumont. We're required to send this letter out every year, every twelve months until we finish the entire inventory.
The, uh, one lead line that was identified in the forty or so galvanized lines, were those city lines or property owner lines?
Uh, the lead line was on the, uh, the citizen's side, I believe, uh, not on the city's side. The galvanized were on either side, so.
Okay. Uh, and just to be clear, there's no concerns in water quality necessarily for a galvanized line, is there?
Well, we do periodic lead and copper sampling just as part of the normal TCQ, uh, sampling requirements. The house that has the lead line was actually sampled in the most recent round and there was no appreciable amount. It was under the, the, uh, the regulatory level for lead, just like every other address was. We, the lucky thing for us is we don't have corrosive water. And it takes corrosive water to really leach the lead out of that line and get it into the water.
It's an important point. And a little bit later in this meeting, we're gonna be asked to adopt an ordinance that will allow city staff to come onto private property owners', uh, yards in order to sample the, uh, the, the line and to see what it's made out of. I'm kind of on the fence about that because you're talking about property owners' rights, uh, you know, and we can reserve the conversation for that when that is discussed. But, um, if, if the EPA, uh, when, when did the EPA mandate that we do this?
Uh, it's been in the works for several years, but the final rule on it, um, uh, just released, I think in September.
Okay. Uh, is it possible with a, uh, new president that that might be rolled back?
Uh, it's beyond my magic crystal ball to, to understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance and authorize found payment to Texas Drainage, Drainage, Inc. For the citywide ditching program phase two A, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10, please?
Consider approving the city's legislative priorities for 2025, 2026. And it comes with the recommendation of, of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for their approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 10. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to kinda reiterate and reemphasize with staff that, you know, we've kinda been in contact with some of our state representation about, um, a recreational center out there in the south end of town due to the fact that we don't have one in that side, that side of town. Uh, one of the programs is they had additional funding for load of modern income areas where it's heavily populated. You know, a family dense area and that South Puck area was a good area. I noticed we did add the language, but I just wanted to kinda reiterate that it is opportunity out there in that area. And I think we should take a laser vision focus on seeing if we can get some additional revenue to come, give something to the community that's well needed in that area.
Yeah, we, we had that communication again, what, last week, maybe got it in. And so we did get it into the documents about that specifically. So we'll be giving that attention as needed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. And we're moving to item number 11. May we have the reading, Mr. City Manager?
Counsel, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Emergency Powers Service of Coontz for the Pennsylvania Avenue Underpass Emergency Generator Repair Project. It comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number 11?
So move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 12, please?
amend the ordinance containing the master fee schedule for water sewer rates. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the amended ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number 12?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 12. Is there any discussion? Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, was this a mistake given to us from the consultant? Or is this something that we messed up in-house?
Your honor, dress that.
Yes, sir. This was a mistake of the consultant. Um, when we got ready to enter the water rates in the system, um, we noticed that these outside rates were the same rates as the prior year. So he merely, the spreadsheet that he uses is many tabs and it's, it's long and very complicated. And apparently he just did not, uh, increase that by four percent and eight percent as he did on the other categories.
So have we checked his other work that he gave us?
Yes, sir, we have.
So we're not gonna go back and try to collect this money that we underbilled for, I'm assuming just October?
We didn't even underbill for October. We have changed these rates in the system. Everything is the correct rate.
So why are we voting on it though? We've already changed it.
Because it's our master fee schedule. It's contained in the ordinance. So we need to amend the ordinance to make those rates the correct rates on the fee schedule.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Fellshaw?
Oh, good. Thank you.
Councilman Getz?
Cheryl, what you're telling us is that none of the citizens were either overbilled or underbilled. Everything was done correctly. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
This is just to amend our listing of the rates for the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And when we voted on our budget, uh, how did this effort did, did it impact our budget in any way by having, uh, the incorrect fee schedule attached?
No, sir, it didn't because when we did the revenue projections, we, we increased the revenue by four percent and eight percent, not based on the rates. So everything is, as should be if we pass this amended ordinance.
Okay.
Councilman Fellshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just stating the obvious, but for the sake of clarity, because I understand how things can be misunderstood. And I know this is addressing outside city, uh, city, uh, or outside city rates. But again, just for everybody to understand, this is not an additional rate increase.
No, sir.
This is a, was a clerical error that we're correcting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion, m- motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item 13?
Counsel, consider adopting a new or, ordinance, the right to access this, to section twenty-two dot zero-two dot zero-zero-eight of the Water and Sewer Regulation Ordinance, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number 13?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval for item 13?
Second.
So there is a motion and a second for approval of item number 13. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner, then Councilman Fellshaw, then Councilman Neal.
Uh, I, I, I'm looking forward to hearing from staff because I struggle with this one as well, uh, especially when it comes to what can be perceived as us going on private citizens' property. Uh, and one of my bigger concerns is when we do go on this private property, how do we handle things like disputes if we dig up something or something is messed up? Will it go, that detail, could it get that deep?
So we're required to go and do an inventory of all the service lines, which also includes the, uh, customer sideline, which in the state of Texas is owned by the landowner of, of that particular property. So we've already been potholing and working around the meter, which technically is private property. So this is to clean up to where it allows city staff or contractors to access and excavate on private property for those service line inspections or other service-related activities, which basically would be replacing the line if we get grant funding to allow us to, to replace the citizen's side of those lines. So what we're doing is we're excavating two approximately 12-inch wide holes, one on each side of the meter. So on our side of the meter, it's, it's no problem. We own the right of way. But on their side of the meter, we would need to excavate that 12-inch hole. And then we would do like we always do if we repair a leak that's on, uh, private property within the right of way. We, we would do dress up afterwards. So we'd fill the hole, put sod back, you know, or in the case of concrete, we would have to repair, uh, whatever's necessary there. So same work we always do when we go after our water lines.
And my follow-up is, these citizens that may be possibly granted this grant opportunity if we get the funding, how are we gonna communicate that we're gonna go in and potentially dig up this 12 inches? How, how are we gonna communicate that to the residents?
Uh, we've been talking to residents in the neighborhood when we go and we do the potholing now. But we do work around the meter so much, we really hadn't gotten a lot of questions on just identifying service lines. It really becomes key when we get to a point, if we obtain grant funding to replace the line and is in its entirety, which would of course require much more of the property to be dug up to replace that line. But it would definitely be to their benefit if we can get, obtain the grant money and be able to do that work for them, so.
Yeah, that, that was explained. Well, I just wanna make sure we're properly communicating prior to, because I just, last thing I want is to email that, you know, we dug up something on their side of the property and they weren't aware.
We, we've tried to publicize what we're doing with the lead line or the service line inspections. And we really have gotten very few questions or calls on, on that work to this point.
With those letters, will it be a letter sent out similar to the letter that you guys recently sent out? You got like a hundred phone calls back?
We haven't been doing citywide. We've been looking only at the areas that we're working within, so the neighborhood. So it's more, much more targeted, um, not just a letter being sent out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fellshaw?
Yes, uh, City Manager, I, Bart answered part of my question. But, uh, I, I do understand this is state required. I get it. We have to do this. But should this language include a statement that after the work is completed, the city will return the private property back to its original state? I know that's an assumption, but it's not in the, language is not in here. Is that something we should add?
I don't see a reason why we couldn't add it. Yeah, we could add it.
Well, I mean, if you're coming on my property to tear my property up, I appreciate you fixing that water line. But I'd like for my property be taken back to its original state and not just assume the city's gonna do that. So just curious if we shouldn't include that.
We will, and we will include it.
Thank you.
It will say reasonably.
Say?
It, it will say reasonably repaired. We can't restore it to its original state, but we will.
Fair enough.
Reasonably.
I yield to the city attorney's legal mind.
She's very wise on that because there could be a case where we can't put it exactly back.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, she's gonna work some method to, uh, protect the city. I understand. Thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Uh, Mr. Orkoviak, so are you going just directly behind the meter and directly in front of the meter?
Correct. It's just a, a.
So it's like.
Twelve-inch wide hole, probably about a foot or so from, from the meter.
So you're not going deep into people's properties then?
No, sir, not unless we get to the point that we would actually replace the entire line.
And for the record, I have Bermuda grass.
Perfect.
Reasonably.
St. Augustine messes it up.
Councilman Durio?
Um, Bart, if you have to replace the whole line, is that just up to the house? Are you gonna be going in folks' labs or under their house or what?
Just, just to the house.
To the house.
Correct. We don't, this, nothing with this program is requiring anything be done within the structure.
So how, uh, if you get the grant money for this, do the folks have to apply for that? Or y'all just already know which houses need to be done and you'll do it?
We, it depends on how much we get, but we would work with, you know, as long as we had funding, we would work with the identified lines until that funding ran out. So as we discovered the lines would need to be replaced, we'd, we'd use the funding to do so.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Turner?
In, in that language, uh, in, in this program, does it, does it list anything specific about seniors? Um, with, with priority or no, it's just everybody in general?
It, it's just looking for lead or galvanized lines, uh, regardless of how old the property owner is.
Understood.
So the, the proceed, the, the language that's being proposed is ordinance language. If staff has a preferred procedure on who gets priority, then that wouldn't necessarily need to be in the ordinance. It could just be a policy for the department.
I, I, I would support, you know, our seniors getting that first preference. It is grant money.
Within the identified lines, because this program's gonna go on for years, I would hate to hold.
Yes, within, within, within identified, but that's just me. I'm speaking on my behalf.
Yeah, that's not a part of this right now.
No, it's not.
All right.
Okay, so are we need, we're needing to amend the motion to include the language?
So we have a, a public hearing. I'm gonna have it brought down to me. I will have a draft of proposed language at the conclusion of that public hearing. So if you.
We'll just postpone 13 until.
You wanna circle back to me?
We can certainly do that. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to conduct a public hearing on dangerous structures. Yes, Mayor. Counsel to conduct a public hearing on dangerous structures.
Anybody signed up to speak on this?
Robert Pryor, Senior, can come forward.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Pryor.
I know somebody was going to get me. Thank you. I'm Robert Pryor, Senior, and I live at 3795 Nathan. But I do also own the property at 57 Bigna. And through the years, I know that I've been slacking doing, but I always tried to catch up and then they'll back off the city. You know, code enforcement, they'll back off a little bit and everything, you know. But this time, they told me I couldn't do nothing. And they even bought the structure saying that it was, that they thought I had something dangerous stuck in there and everything, you know. And I never had visualized where all that come from. I think everybody out there knows me and knows how I conduct my business and everything, you know. But they put a thing and a tag on it, and I never would go in it. Even when, you know, they let up and everything, I just never would go in it because they said that I had to have a policeman, well, a fireman and all kind of stuff and everything that I had before I can go in it. So I didn't ever go in it and everything, you know. And I think Mr. Plantagen and I went in one time when I complained about, I thought somebody had stolen the gate or something like that. And I went in there with two police officers, and they know what's in the building and everything, you know. But I never could understand why they would put something like that there. And you know, to say that they really thought something like that was out there and everything, you know. And to me, I think I ain't as bad as the house right there directed behind 5030 and everything, you know. They got all kind of trailers and stuff all in there lined up on both sides. But they seem to think it's me. I know the place in Philam. We had a struggle this year and it ain't over yet and everything, you know. But I'mma do what I'mma do what's required to try to save the building. I got a lot of stuff that I have accumulated over the years. And all I want to do is keep it out there. A lot of it, I'mma get rid of it. I'mma tear it down if the city give me a permit, if the code enforcement give me a permit to do so. But if I have to, I will take it down or I'll let y'all take it down. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else?
No, sir, that's all I have.
Okay, at this point, I close the public hearing. And Mr. City Manager, if we may have the reading of item number 14, please.
City Council, after conducting a public hearing, considering ordinance declared that following six structures to be unsafe structures and order the owners to raise the said structures within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner of a structure requests and is authorized by city council to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full. All payment plans shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within 10 days after the effective date of the ordinance. And this comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Real quick, before the motion's made, I would like to, for y'all to consider removing item number five, that's 3160 Sabine Pass. It includes three structures and a garage. Those three structures have three different addresses. We did do notice with sending to the property owner or the one that's on record of the tax roll. However, I think full transparency, that should have been listed out as 3160 Sabine, 3170, and 828 Harriet, and that's not how it was posted. So I would like to remove that and consider that possibly at a later date, should the structures remain in violation.
Okay.
Can we go ahead and approve 3160 and then you can come back and add the other ones?
Well, what I'm asking is to remove 3160 from consideration of this.
To answer Councilman Neal's question, you could, but splitting the bid packet, the demo packet like that, which is, you know, we'd have to go out and regraze it twice because when they go out and demo it, they do to the grass. It's just the way the structures are listed or positioned on the property, they all have three different addresses. Normally, that's an anomaly. It was posted correctly in the newspaper, but our posting in the newspaper doesn't reflect what's posted in the agenda item. So it needs to be removed.
Okay, is there a motion for item 14, removing item number five?
No, I wanted to ask another question. Go on.
We'll open the motion.
I move to approve minus five.
All right, item 14, minus number five.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 14, minus item number five. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to ask Mr., was it Mr. Pryor on the Bigna property? Is that his, yes. Has there been any type of communication with him as to what's required or what's expected?
Yeah, I can invite up my building official, Boyd Meyer, and also demolition coordinator Silas Clutter. However, the history on this one, he has been on a work program in past. There was some progress, however, for about six months, there's been no progress made. And that's why it's before y'all. But to give more technical support or to answer that question, I'll ask them to come up.
So Mr. Pryor has spoken with us since he's gotten on the council list, and I am agreeable to him getting on a work program. However, because of the nature of the property, he is going to need to get a real demo contractor to remove some of the larger structures on there. It's not the sort of thing that he can just do himself. He's going to get to, need to get someone who has the real insurance behind their company to be able to remove those structures.
Yes. That was my question. I think when it came up while he was talking, I missed the opportunity to ask him a question because I wanted to know if he has stated whether he's able to move forward with demolition, having a contractor demolish it. He did say, I think I heard you say, if it has to be, then it has to be. But do you, have you looked at the resources? Is it proper for me to ask him?
At this point, Mayor, I'm going to ask that you reopen the public hearing. The staff report really should have been done during the public hearing to give counsel a chance to have this discussion and then also have the dialogue with the property owner. I understand that there's a motion and a second on the floor. So the motion would need to be withdrawn and counsel would need a motion and a second to reopen the public hearing.
Councilman?
Yes, I'd like.
We need somebody to.
So the motion, the question would be, is Councilman Neal made the motion?
I pulled my motion.
So the motion has been withdrawn. Now Councilman Samuel's making a motion to open a public hearing.
Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second for that?
There are second to reopen the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All right, there is a.
Ready to go.
Okay. So my question, I understand staff. I'd like to ask Mr. Pryor. Mr. Pryor, it's my understanding that you've talked to staff and you did enroll in the work program at one time. And just before you sat down, you stated if it needed to be done, it has to be done. But my question to you, are you in a position to execute the work program to either have it demolished yourself or do the work and have it restored? That's the question that's before us now. If, what I see, what seen what was wrong with it was just the doors were rotted, you know, well, shabby and everything, you know. Somebody had taken, I don't know, maybe 12, maybe 10 sheets of tin off the side of it. I don't know who in the world would do something like that, but they did it on the backside and everything, you know. And really, it was perfect, it still is a perfectly good building and everything, you know. And they told me I couldn't do it. They told me, and if I had to get somebody, if I got somebody to do it, they had to be with the city, have the bonds with the city, and they had to have insurance and everything. Well, basically, the people that I know that did that or helped me out there during the years and everything, you know, when we were really struggling, basically, they did. And the ones that I, I asked to come down here and everything, you know, they don't have the adequate, you know, bondage and stuff to do it, to help me with and everything, you know. We basically would all help, you know, do it, one, everybody would, you know, help everybody and everything, you know. But with the bonds and everything, you know, really, you're tying the people's hand at the ones that, you know, can help me other than the ones that, that I guess I have to ask the city, you know, who does it and everything, you know. But I told them I could tear that building out. Well, Mr. Pryor, I understand your concern. However, it doesn't meet code. And because it's been declared a dangerous structure, it's difficult for us to take exceptions to the rule. I don't move to. Okay, so I did not know there had been a work program before. So they are not going to allow for you to tear it down yourself. It has to be someone that's bonded to do the demolition or they will demolish it. Is that my understanding? Am I correct with that?
They would need a bonded and licensed contractor to demolish the structure.
Okay. And would you explain to him why?
It's required by our city ordinances. That's essentially why.
Yes. I have, but some things in that problem, I bought two of my grandmother's, Amy's, some of their stuff. How much time would he have to get? Ever though, about 40 years. I have different things. How much time would it take for you to get that out? I guess if I get right on it and everything, you know. No more than maybe 15 days. I have to have someplace to put it, but. Okay, but they're not, that won't be done next week, that soon, right?
Right, so if you guys were to move forward, it would need to be removed within 10 days with the ordinance passed. But you can always give additional time. That would be also for the work program. Just for the benefit of the public, a couple of basic rules. If counsel were to grant additional time, typically a work program is 150 days. Must be the owner of the property, 10 days to enroll with, into the work program, 90 days to dry the structure in, so that's your roof, doors, walls, windows. And then the remaining 60 days is to complete the project for a total of 150.
But that's in the event an individual were trying to rehab the property themselves.
If it takes longer than 10, 10 days, I would recommend that additional time is given to him in a work program and it can be identified or conditioned for the type of work that's going to happen, which could be removal.
Of property, yeah. Well, that's, I'm trying to look at a way that he can at least get the property removed from the location prior to demolition.
Yeah, and as he was saying, I think he indicated it might take about 15 days. That's where I'm saying that we should, if we were to give him that, it should be into a work program to remove that structure within however many days needs to occur. It should be conditional.
Don't you have to go out for bid?
If the city's not doing it, if he's removing it.
He meant for the demolition of the structure, and yes, we do.
I'm sorry.
City's not going to be over there for, city won't be over there to demo it for probably 60, 90 days.
I know, that's what I'm saying, so.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking on the private owner remove, or the private citizen removing that that structure from his property. If we were to do it.
No, I am talking about allowing the private citizen to remove his materials from that structure. It normally wouldn't happen within 30 days anyway, so.
I'm sorry. Yes, it would go out for bid. There's some time. Yes, sorry about that.
You will have an opportunity to remove those things from the property, but it would be done by a contractor. You can't do it yourself. I couldn't physically go into the buildings. You can go into the building, you're. They got it, so I can't go in. They told me I couldn't go in. You can go in to remove, he can go in to remove his property, is that correct?
Is there anything that bars him? He's not right, is he?
He was on a work program.
He's on one, he's outside of it. Can he go into the structure? Yeah, there's nothing barring you from it. However, if it is unsafe. Yeah, if it is unsafe, do be sure to use precaution.
And I know we're mixing up his private items versus demolition of the building. He wants to remove all of his personal items from aunts, uncles, grandparents, whoever it might be. He wants to get his personal items out of there. We're okay with that. But to start doing any kind of removal of build, of product as far as the structural integrity of the building, what's left there on some of the deteriorated portions, we're saying no.
I understand, and that's what he, I don't think he understood when he said dangerous structure. It's not the contents of the structure, it's the structure itself. I understand, but there's been inspections. You can go in and remove your personal things, those items that are dear to you. You can get those, but you cannot demolish the structure or anything like that. Well, I was told that, you know, I couldn't rebuild anything or hang any doors or change no hinges. Well, that's fine, everything, but the stuff that I had in there, that it's just accumulation of years and everything, you know. Well, I'm trying to do the best I can to get, allow you to get as much out as you can. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. 15 days, well, my daughter, I guess the reason I jumped up early when I seen that the public hearing, and I wasn't paying attention, that my daughter right now is sick. And she, I left her at home sick by herself because she wanted me to come down here and to try to save it rather than let them come in there and just take everything that, all my stuff that I got out there that we have accumulated through the years. I understand you have gone through some things. And we want to give you, until someone comes out to, will he be contacted prior to the contractor going out? Until someone comes out, you can begin to remove your personal items. You're free to do that. It's just that you cannot do anything to attempt to rehab the building at this point. Touch it, nothing like that, everything, you know, just the items that we got in there. Okay. And if they want to send the police out there or. That's, that's not, that's not the issue. Well, the fire department, they can bring them out there, everything, and I have no objection whatsoever. I know they didn't been in there, and there's nothing that I know have changed that I did or anybody else did. It's not you. They're going by policy. It don't make you feel good. I understand. No kind of way. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Felshaw.
Yes, sir. Before you sit, please, sir, here, front. Yeah, I appreciate you showing up to, to the mic. I appreciate you showing up to speak. I was more concerned when you said you didn't know any contractors that were bonded. Did you have any family, anybody that can help you or assist you try to reach out and look for a contractor?
No, I don't. I hate to put it in this other, but everybody I know is either old or dead, but that's where it's at right now.
Yes, sir, and this for staff, correct me, because I'm asking out of ignorance. And in circumstances like this, can anybody assist this gentleman in finding someone? I don't know if it's possible. I'm just asking out of ignorance.
Oh, no. We.
Oh, no, um, we don't recommend contractors and we don't allow them to give, I'm saying we, I do not allow them to give legal advice at the counter. So, um, there is, they can direct them to a list of, of vendors, they can, you know, direct them to there, but we can't, um, provide, we don't have a list of vendors that we can give. It gets way too complicated and way too muddy, um, in that.
So, so that, that, yeah, that's what I meant, and that, that's what I'm asking. So you're saying they can give him.
Say, for example, we, we recommend, we provide a list, let's just say we had a vendor list, and they use somebody on that list, and that person runs off with their money. The city doesn't want to have any ties or, or.
Understood.
To that person, not that I'm saying contractors are shady, I'm just saying, things happen.
Well, and city, well, we don't wanna be perceived as choosing one contractor over the other either.
Understood, I'm just looking at this circumstance and seeing if it's anything that can do, it can be done to the system, but I do understand. So, thank you.
Councilman Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Pryor. I, my concern was just making sure you had ample time to remove your personal items and counsel. Councilman Samuel took care of that. Uh, so the only thing I add to that is looking at these pictures of this building. Let me encourage you to please be careful. I know those items are important to you, and, uh, I understand. So, get them out, get someone to help you, uh, but please be careful.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
Just one point of clarification, Mayor, the, the fifty-seven-ten Big New Road Address owned by a Kenneth Williams is not this Kenneth Williams.
Point of clarity received. Okay. So now we will, uh, public hearing is now closed. And, uh, we have had the reading of item number fourteen, do we need to reread that?
Yeah, just for, for the minute's purposes.
Mr. City Manager.
Okay, City Council after conducting a public hearing considered in ardent to declare the following six stru- structures to be unsafe structures in order to owners to raise the said structures within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting City Council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or City Council action. Additionally, if the property owner obstructed request and is authorized by City Council to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full or payment plan shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within ten days after the effective date of the ordinance, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number fourteen, removing item, list number five?
Move to approve the ordinance, uh, removing number five.
Second.
There is a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on item fourteen? All in favor of approving item number fourteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, we're gonna revisit, uh, item number thirteen. May we have the reading of the corrected version of item thirteen? Madam City Attorney, since you have that.
We're gonna reread that item now.
Sorry, Council consider adopting a new ordinance, the right to access to section twenty-two dot oh-two dot zero-zero-eight of the water and sewer regulation art ordinance, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
So now the last line of that ordinance will read, um, to the extent the city has to do work on private property, the city shall restore their property as close to the original condition as reasonably possible.
Okay, uh, with that added language, is there a motion for item number thirteen?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Sir.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number thirteen, any discussion? All those in favor of approving item thirteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the first work session, please?
Yes, Mayor. First work session, Council to review and discuss the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau to apply for the Tourism Friendly Texas Program through the Tourism Friendly Designation for the city. And we have Ms. Freddie Willard and her staff coming forward.
Mayor West, City Council members, City Manager Williams, and executive staff. Of course, I'm Freddie Willard, the Executive Director for the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm here in support of, uh, Marketing Manager Sadie Aetha. She's done some research, had a great idea, and I wanted to come and support her. We are seeking a special designation for the city of Beaumont, one of which we hope, um, you find beneficial to the city of Beaumont, we think it's important. So without further ado, uh, we have our Marketing Director Sadie Aetha here. She's gonna give a b- brief presentation, and she'll be able to answer any questions that you might have. Sadie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for allowing me a chance to speak about applying for the Tourism Friendly Designation for the city of Beaumont through the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Office of the Governor's Tourism Department, Travel Texas, reached out to the C V B regarding this designation, and this is an initiative that supports the C V B's mission, and this designation shines a light on the city of Beaumont as not only is a designation, but as a place that welcomes visitors. Uh, first and foremost, being tourism friendly aligns with our mission at the C V B. The Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau is dedicated to boosting tourism and the local economy by promoting the city's unique attractions, dining, and entertainment. We aim to attract both leisure and business visitors by facilitating meetings, conventions, and events of all sizes by increasing hotel stays, supporting local businesses, and working closely with the community business and, uh, work, sorry, and community partners. We showcase Beaumont's culture, arts, and events as a leading advocate for the city. Um, next slide. Along with our mission, we benefit the city greatly. We boost the local economy, enhance the city's image and visibility, support local businesses, uh, and help with the cultural and community development. Uh, in twenty-twenty-three, visitors spent three hundred and sixty-two point five million in direct spending into the Beaumont's economy, and it creates three point two jobs locally. This designation can only positively increase the numbers. So, the Tourism Friendly is a news designation through the Office of the Governor's Tourism Department. This is similar to the Film Friendly Designation, which the city of Beaumont obtained in twenty-twenty-three. And since this designation, the city has streamlined filming application processes and has had eight applications to film in Beaumont, along with an annual film festival to enhance the awareness of the Film Friendly Designation. So, goals for this specific designation would be to strengthen relationships with existing community partners, assist small and rural communities with limited tourism resources, educate local leaders on the importance of tourism as a tool for economic development and job creation, and encourage participation in state government programs available for tourism development. Uh, this designation, uh, spotlights us as a destination that promises to our community and visitors, which aligns with our mission. Uh, the timeline for the designation is as follows. To apply, we start with a letter of intent from a liaison at the C V B, who will serve as the primary contact for Travel Texas. After the letter is accepted, we complete the required certified community questionnaire provided by Travel Texas. And then at the same time the questionnaire is being completed, the destination community must complete the required community online training. Community support is also a requirement, requiring letters of recommendations from two tourism partners and one elected official. After completing all the steps, the destination must write a proclamation that will be announced through the local and state government. And after the proclamation, the city will have obtained its Tourism Friendly Designation. The goal is to have all the steps completed by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Some extra benefits of the Tourism Friendly Designation is having extra press releases released about Beaumont, Texas at no additional cost, access to additional tourism resources and documents, enhancing our destination and educational workshops through Travel Texas throughout the year. Along with these benefits, we will be featured at the Tourism Friendly Destination on the Travel Texas webpage in a catalog showcasing all the Tourism Friendly Destinations in the state, enhancing visibility to the national and international travelers. So far, only seven cities have earned this designation, Pearland, Rockwall, Mansfield, Tyler, Mineral Wells, Abilene, and Waco. This designation increases our visibility as a destination to the city as a whole, and it's a proactive approach and process that aligns with the goal of the city and the council to grow and impact the city's economic development, especially through tourism. So, it was a very short presentation, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Do you have any questions about this designation?
I believe so, thank you.
Awesome, uh, if there are no further, uh, questions, we'd like to have permission to apply for this designation, and with the approval to move forward and receive a letter of recommendation.
Thank you for the request. Mr. City Manager, can we go into the second work session?
Council to review and discuss the details of the youth sports program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And we're gonna have Mr. Stacy Lewis come forward with the presentation. Uh, Chris, Mr. Boone's not here today, so Stacy's coming giving an update of what we put in place with these programs. And, uh, of course, we've already done some things to reorganize the department and get Stacy relocated over at the Sterling Pruitt Center, so things have progressed, uh, there. Uh, Chris has overseen that, so Stacy's gonna come today to talk to you directly about the programs that he's gonna be working with, and, and we'll be, be glad to address any other questions you might have.
Good, better, best. Never let it rest until our good gets better and our better becomes best. To our mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman, our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, and staff, good afternoon. My task today is to provide you with a recap, uh, periphery, and an overview of youth programs initiatives for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and so you'll be caught up to speed on programs, registration timelines, projected impacts, and venues pertaining to the aforementioned. The plan, plan is to continue to serve the committee by increasing recreational activities in underserved areas. Uh, we are endeavoring to provide students, uh, a positive outlet that channel energy, um, produce healthy outcomes through organize, organized team sports. And our expansion is to expand programs to other sports and activities to serve all of the citizens of Beaumont. Youth flag football, um, youth basketball, summer camp, summer track, aquatics, straight talk symposiums, those are the expansions. Youth flag football, that we are, um, targeting, um, the age of, uh, just before tackle, uh, which would be as young as four and topping out at eight years old. Uh, the dates for this would be, um, August, September of twenty-twenty-five. Hey, youth basketball, uh, again, we're targeting ages, uh, pre-k, four through fourteen-year-olds. And the participants, uh, would be boys and girls. Uh, the registration, uh, is December the second through January third, and the location would be at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center. Here's a breakdown, divisions, there are four and five, uh, six and seven-year-olds, eight, nine-year-olds, ten and eleven-year-olds, twelve and thirteen-year-olds, and then possibly a fourteen-year-old division. The season details, um, well, the dates of play, but we, we endeavor to play every Saturday minus any holidays that we might have there. There might be some possible midweek play, and the reason that you do midweek play is that you, uh, stay within the, the boxes of the proposed, uh, ten-week, uh, guidelines, and that each team is, uh, secures a seven-game regular season and a single elimination playoff per division after the season. We're trying to jump off, uh, either January the fourth or the eleventh, and the end date's the second or the ninth. The or in the play has to do with, um, we're contingent upon some of the, um, B I S D school schedule. So, I think they will be coming back after the Christmas break, and would that be too soon? If not, we'd move, um, to the eleventh. Obviously, we'd play one week there, then we off again because of the King holiday, and then we'd play, uh, uh, consecutive Saturdays. Then we have the makeup or the catch-up games through the week scheduled permitting. Summer camp, uh, we envision two sessions. Uh, session one would run through, uh, from June ninth to July third. We'd have the holiday off, and we'd jump right back on it on July seventh through August first of twenty-twenty-five. Target area for that would be kids as age, uh, five through twelve. The cost for that is one hundred and fifty dollars per child per session, and there's an estimated attendance that we can draw one hundred kids per session. Moving on to youth track, um, we target kids age five through eighteen-year-old. Uh, even an eighteen-year-old that has graduated within the, uh, track season still would be able, be, uh, eligible to participate. Uh, the participants would be boys and girls, and the registration for this would, would start in spring of twenty-twenty-five. The season, we try to get off as closest to Labor Day as possible, so like the first Tuesday after, excuse me, the, what's the holiday in May? Uh, Memorial Day, all right, that, that holiday, and then we'll wrap up, no later than August eighth, just in time to get them back to school. Registration would occur again at the Sterling Pruitt Center. Now, here's a little bit about track. Uh, we are a member of the Texas Amateur Athletic Federation. There is a M O U that's already established with the Beaumont Independent School District for, um, facility uses. We would practice, uh, three times a week, and, uh, I've already established an adjunct program in East Texas to include, uh, programs, uh, well, they belong to us, but, uh, in Newton and Jasper. There's gonna be a minimum of a hundred kids that'll be participating. The start dates, again, is May twenty-seventh through to August eighth, and here's what they get. Um, they have local, um, meets, far as here, and maybe, uh, Baytown area. There's an area around, there's a regional meet, and then those who, uh, do well at the regional meets, they qualify for the state meet. And our ultimate destination is to bring as many kids as possible to the twenty-twenty-five Games of Texas, which will be in College Station, Texas. Tina, if you would go back to two slides for me. And this is a champion right here, this is, uh, one of the kids that we took last year. Um, she, she won the one-hundred, um, the two-hundred, and the one-ten hurdles. No kid in this area has done that, and she ran the fourteen U division, and she was only thirteen. This is the fastest thirteen-year-old, actually fourteen-year-old in the state of Texas. Aquatics, that encompasses, um, the two city pools, which are the Magnolia and the Alice Keith locations. We do understand the pool is open to all residents. Uh, the swim season, which is ideally that you would open, um, from holiday to holiday. So, it would be, um, Memorial Day weekend, and you wanna close out Labor Day weekend, that's ideally. The pool is open from Tuesday through Sunday, and we're now working on some incentives for lifeguards. Uh, just being honest that the price of tea in China has risen, and so, uh, we don't want to, um, have some of the struggles that we've seen in the past about keeping the pools open. So, um, I'm working with the H R department currently to incentivize these things so we can open and close, uh, at the times that we desire. Lastly, straight talk symposiums, um, and try to do it twice. April of twenty-twenty-five, and again, September twenty-twenty-five. Depending on location and participation, there may be one for our young men, uh, and the subsequent one for our. one for our young ladies, or I'm praying that we're able to do a, have duality in it all. Any questions?
Councilman Fellshaw.
Mr. Lewis, thank you for your investment in the youth of our city. This is huge. Just question regarding summer camp. Is it possible? Are there plans? Any consideration given to a sponsorship program for those families that can't afford the $150 per student?
I can speak for a few things. Some of them, it would be in the past. There have been scholarship opportunities or whatever. One time, we had a deal with Region Six, which involves, or the Hope Six Project, which involves the apartment complex across the street. And we did those for a number of years. Other, there's been private citizens who, you know, hey, I want to take care of these 10 kids. So I believe all of that is welcome, as long as it falls within the policy and procedures that are outlined by this body.
Thank you.
I just want to say I'm happy to see you presenting these programs. They're needed in our community. So thank you for your time, your effort, and everything you've put into it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Turner, Councilman Durio.
I had a question in reference to some of these programs. I understand you run them, but as far as budgets and staffing, how do you normally deal with these programs?
This is a new creature in terms of my transitioning from, well, still the community liaison, but transitioning from one workspace to another. To use the verbiage of our city manager, making sausage. And it can be, and it is, arduous and somewhat of a tedious process, but I believe we're going to get there. In terms of budget, I've, I turned in, I was approved for what I presented to this council back in August from the community liaison. Since then, I've been tasked with new programs, these initiatives that I presented to you. And so with that, I'm absorbing some of, or the majority of, the recreations budget, line items and things of this nature. So I believe that there's a plan in place to lump those together and get the most out of it. I also understand that there has been some suggestions and recommendations to, as I presented to ACM, Boom, that, you know, this is what this costs, you know, versus maybe what might have been presented prior to, you know. So best answer I have.
And just my second.
If I can help with that one, Councilmember. Some of the costs will be exhort from the existing budget, but there's a likelihood we're probably coming back with the, with the budget adjustment or amendment for some of these programs if they get too expensive. But that's, that was a part of the plan that we might have to come back with a bit of a budget adjust, amendment, I'm sorry, not adjust, but amendment, to make sure everything's fully funded.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns, because I know we did roughly a year and a half ago, we took some funding to kind of focus on some of these newer programs. That's what I was wondering, will it be reallocated or how does it work? But I think I got a clear clarification.
The dollars that were allocating last year's budget, for last year's budget, it went away. So whatever we budgeted for this year's budget, we'll use those dollars and allocate them. But if we have to, if we need more and have to do some amendments, we'll be coming back to council for a budget amendment.
All right. And my, my second follow-up question was, one of my biggest concerns is marketing. You know, I want to make sure, you know, we have a marketing strategy and how are we marketing these programs and getting it out to our youth? You know, I think that's one big thing that I'm really passionate about, and I'm excited to see that we have some of these programs come to existence. But I have to be honest, you know, in the past, we, we, we kind of missed the mark with marketing or getting participation. So how do you plan to market or get the participation necessary to make sure these programs are successful?
Well, to date, we've already had a coaches meeting. And that was last week, and there's another one that's set forward December the 4th. My marketing strategies are text, email, email blast, social media platforms, flyers, other publications, telephone calls, and face-to-face. And the word of mouth, just in my dealings have been, was successful. So I, again, I, I don't have a flyer together. We don't have anything in schools yet, but I have a list of folks that we deal with, and I sent a group text out, and they met me. So currently, I, I know we're going to do at least 20 teams in basketball, and that's just from, from that. And so I, the marketing strategy is, you know, there's, that's just a proof in the pudding that we do it, you know, the way that, you know, we do it and it's been successful. So I'm, I'm not on any, any social media platforms, but my friends are. And so I, once the flyer is created, I'll send that blast out to you and ask that you share it. And that's how we get there.
I'm fine, Mayor. Councilman Durio.
Yes, Mr. Lewis. I have one question. On your summer camps, are you going to have, I guess, like counselors that, that'll work with the kids during the summer camp?
Okay. Yes, sir. Again, we, as we continue to make this sausage, be direct. I invented summer camp, so I understand what it looks like. The way that, what we don't do is that I don't hire kids to watch kids. I think there has been a rare consideration there, and it's been because of, I know that kid can handle those kids. We hire a summer camp supervisor, typically as someone who, probably a educator, more likely, a PE coach that is looking for some kind of summer work. They'll prob, they're residual, they come back every year. That's how I've seen it. And we hire at least an 18-year-old or someone who's older that want, that wants to work and that understands the difficulty in terms of setting example, providing curriculum, and leading our young people. That's the way I see summer camp.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Any other comments?
Well, I want to also say that I've been familiar with your IBELOVE League for the last several years, and I know the success of it with the basketball program and having attended many of the games. And it is very, very well-attended, a lot of teams involved, and as well as the track. And I have every confidence that you are well-equipped to, to do this. And I think we can have some success in these programs that we haven't seen in some time. And I think that's important for our community. And I know that with the lifeguards, I know my son worked for you about 16 years ago at our city pools as a lifeguard. And it's an experience that he still remembers and holds dear, but you do have to get that lifeguard training. So people have to get certified in order to do that. But, so finding ways to help incorporate, get these kids certified, because, and I know you'll do that.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Anything else on that, Mr. City Manager?
As, as Mr. Lewis said, we're still making this sausage. We're still working through these, some of the logistical things here, but it's, it's progressing really nicely. Staff is, Assistant City Manager Boom, I'm sorry, has worked diligently on this to get things done, you know, with some direction. And Mr. Lewis is really doing some great things, and he's made some commitments to the city, even, you know, at the, at the cost of some of his personal programs. So we're excited about it going forward with it.
Any other discussion? Then we're going to start with Councilmember comments and staff comments, and I will start with Councilman Durio.
I just want to thank the staff for their presentations through the work sessions, very informative, and we appreciate that. That's all I got, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilman Gatz.
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman Turner.
Just congrats to Officer Riley. I remember when I first got on council, you welcomed me with open arms, and I just want to let you know, I appreciate you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. And I have plenty of kids if you ever get, get boring. You might send them right back, but, but, but seriously, congratulations. You deserve to spend time with your family and enjoy that. And another thing is, thank you to staff who all came up and presented. You definitely appreciate it. I'm looking forward to some of the outcomes of some of those projects. And lastly, Mr. and Mrs. Jefferson, at that address, 4785 Lufkin Street. I, I do have a huge concern about that. It, it's been in front of us probably since I've been on council, and that's gone on four years. If, if there's anything we can do, any projects or programs we have coming up in that area, I would really appreciate an update and maybe a timeline of where we hit on, on that particular project for that, for that family. It's got to the point where if I spoke to the husband, he's almost so frustrated, he's no longer going to come to council, even though I courage him to come, express how he feels. And I know we have a lot of citizens with different issues in the city, but I just want to point out there be, they have been pretty consistent, and no matter if I ran into them in the grocery store or at a neighborhood association, they, they bring up this same issue. And I've been kind of involved in it, and I just want to see how close we are to getting some form of a resolution.
Councilman Fellshaw. Thank you, Councilman Turner.
Officer Riley, thank you for your service, your hard work. But mostly, thank you for the compassion that I heard in your voice as you would speak to me about the kids and the youth that you were touching in the community. That was obvious, as you would describe to me what you were doing with the youth of our city. I, I can only hope that there will be someone that will come up behind you and pick up the baton and continue with that race of reaching out to the kids and the youth with such compassion. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Councilman Fellshaw. Councilman Samuel.
Yes, I'd just like to join with Councilmember Turner in expressing my concerns about the Jeffersons over on Lufkin. They've been dealing with this a long time, and I'd like to know exactly what we're doing to resolve that issue permanently as soon as possible. And Officer Riley, it's been years. It seems like yesterday, but you are one of the finest examples of a public servant that I know. You respond, you respond with passion, and no one that works with you wouldn't know that it's sincere. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Officer Riley. Good luck in the future. I know you're looking forward to retirement. Councilman Durio, I was busy last night and didn't get a chance to watch the Cowboy game. Anything happen?
Councilman Gatz.
No comment.
I, I need to go back and also extend my congratulations to you, Carol, for your retirement. You've been here just as long as I have been, and, you know, in, in your role is, it's, it's been an amazing, wonderful experience dealing with you and seeing the passion and compassion you have for our children. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney.
I don't want to say congratulations, because I'm not, I'm not excited about this for you. I'm going to miss you dearly. We've celebrated you and all your accomplishments, and I can echo everything I already said, but you know that you will be truly missed in your role. The city, you, you, you deserve this, but the city is going to have really big shoes to fill with your passing. So continue to send me pictures of the baby. Know that you'll be missed.
Thank you.
A couple of clarification points. The one lead line we have in the city, it is lead on both sides. So the city service line as well as the customer service line. And then the bridges that are under that contract are Avenue A, Calder, North Circuit, Delaware, Dowling, Erie Street, Highland Avenue, Pivotoe, two on Washington Boulevard, and two on Feeling, as well as one on Highland. So that's the list of the bridges. And as you can see, we have a lot going on from all the items that were under Public Works today. I did want to take the time to thank Molly Villarreal, as well as David Tingle, John Pippens, and all the engineering staff. Without their hard work, we could never have this quantity of work going on successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bart Kowiac. Assistant City Manager Ellis.
All right. So tomorrow, we have the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Community Open House. It's going to be at the Lakeside Center from 5:30 to 7:30. This is the second of two open houses that we've had for the master plan. So we're asking anybody within the community to please come out and speak with staff as well as our consultant to provide your feedback and opinions on how you would like to see the city's parks facilities, as well as recreation facilities, develop over the next 10 to 20 years. So this is a long-term plan, so we want as many people to come out, because it's going to impact the city of Beaumont for the next 10 to 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our CFO.
Just wanted to say congrats to Carol.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to correct a statement that I said from the last council meeting. We were discussing high-frequency transit, and I indicated that the Parkdale Route Bus arrives in intervals of 15 minutes. I want to correct that. They arrive in 30 to 45-minute intervals. I was under the, the understanding of 15 minutes, so that was my mistake. But I do want to correct that for the public, so, so that's out there. And also, congratulations to Officer Riley. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement. I'm going to need a new number, because I know you're not going to keep that phone, so I'm going to need a new number so we can have our talks. I also want to thank Jackie in HR for her quick response when Tracy sent the email out to try to get something together for Carol for her retirement. She jumped on that. Want to thank Reflections on Calder for the quick engravement that they did for her. I won't call it a plaque, I'll just say her, her retirement gift. But they did a really good job on getting that engraved and getting it ready for today. So we just want to shout out to Reflections and to Jackie in HR. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. We'll get a report out to council on the Jefferson sewer situation and what we're going to do to mitigate it going forward. It's, I, I understand and feel the same way as you do, that it's been an ongoing situation. Just thank you, Carol. Thank you for your service to the city, for your long dedication. Thank you for making me feel comfortable when I'm here. I appreciate that, and you do that with everybody. So it's just natural for you. But I'll just say one thing, that you won't stay retired, so. So enjoy while you can. And lastly, I, I'd just like to remind everyone that my high school has beat every high school in Beaumont and Port Arthur in football this season in one district, so.
Turn his mic off. Turn his mic off. Just turn his mic off.
It's not basketball season yet.
Mute his mic. Can we fix that? We need the ability to mute his mic. You didn't have it to do.
Councilman Durio.
I just want to thank Officer Riley as well for the service to the community, for what you do for the council, and also for those neighborhood association meetings. You kept everything in line for that. We really appreciate it, and I'm pretty sure you're going to leave somebody competent to, to take over that program for you. But enjoy your, your retirement, and only bit of advice I could give you, when you retire, don't get into politics. But enjoy your retirement, and only bit of advice I could give you when you retire, don't get into politics.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. I will continue, as I spoke earlier. Officer Riley, thank you for your commitment to this city and for who you are. And I've gotten to see that over the last couple of decades. And you, whatever you're doing, you do it with all your heart, and the love for the community shines through. And it is, you've been, you're an excellent example of our law enforcement in Beaumont P D, and thank you for that. I want to, also, I want to applaud Operation Blessing at Victory Temple. This past Saturday, they gave away 500 turkeys. And this, this coming Saturday, November 23rd, Redemption Church is giving away turkeys as well in downtown Beaumont, which is their third year to do that. And I know I was downtown Saturday night speaking at India Fest. It had over 900 people, and the symphony was also happening across the street. So parking was tight, which was a good problem to have in downtown Beaumont. And tonight is the lighting at Lamar University. So they're lighting their Christmas lights a little bit early. So for those that are interested in going and excited that Bloomberg Philanthropies, that we've applied for two of the grants there, have the privilege of being in the Bloomberg Harvard University Cities Leadership Initiative that our city manager serves in as well. And they, Bloomberg Philanthropies is very generous to cities, and we are able to hopefully take advantage of a couple of these grants and remind people that in two days, we have our State of the City Luncheon next door from 11 to 1 P M. And we invite everybody to come over. That is, the Greater Beaumont Chamber of Commerce is partnering with us and helping us present that. And we're excited about all of that. And at this point, we are now going to recess to executive session.